...of City Council of Trinidad, October 7, 2025. The time is now 6:00 PM in the City Council Chambers of City Hall, 135 Moreton Street, Trinidad, Colorado, 81082. As a general housekeeping, please turn off cell phones, be respectful, and take personal conversations into the lobby. Lester, do you mind leading us in the process?
I'd be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, roll call.
Debono?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Present.
Truhel?
Here.
Olgutree?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Great.
Karen did ask me to mention that she regrets not being able to be here tonight, but I'll be filling in for her, so thank you. Item two is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Shu, second?
Second.
Debono for the second. Item three, policy items.
Roll call.
Oh.
Pardon? Roll call.
I was assuming that was done.
Debono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Truhel?
Yes.
Olgutree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Thank you. Item three, policy items and staff reports.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Williamson and council. You were presented in your packet the 2026 draft budget. That was made available to the public today. It is posted both downstairs on the second floor and available at the counter. It's also at the library. You adopted the public presentation time, so we will be taking public comment over the coming weeks. The draft budget is in front of you. I want to go over the schedule for how we're going to review the draft budget. At the October 13th, next Monday, a work session will be going through the general fund and reviewing that. On October 21st, we will have the public hearing for input on the budget. So while the budget's available now, the public can come on the 21st to our regular meeting and provide public comment. Then on the 27th, in the work session, we'll review the enterprise funds, meaning water, gas, power, and sewer. Then on November 10th, at the work session, we will review the capital improvement fund, the economic development fund, the lottery fund, and the tourism fund. Our plan right now, if all of your input is then taken and put into the budget, we will have first reading on November 18th. Then we will take any comments that we have after first reading and update the budget. Our plan right now is second reading and adoption of the budget ordinances on December 16th. I want to remind you legally, we need to adopt the budget according to state law by December 31st. And I also wanted to remind you that this schedule, the posting, the availability of the 2026 budget is in conformance with the City of Trinidad Home Rule Charter, which states it will be delivered to you by no later than the first regular meeting in October, which is tonight. So please start reviewing, be prepared for the work session next Monday. We'll go over the general fund. Any questions on that portion? Okay? The second thing I want to introduce to you in this policy item is that we did meet with the unions. We met with all three multiple times. We talked about the opportunity to look at different insurance mechanisms. So one option was to leave the insurance as it exists now. That gives you what? I'm going to use the title of the three options, PPO six, PPO seven, and PPO eight. The second option was to look at dropping PPO six, which is the most expensive to the city, and instead having seven, eight, and nine. So the second option also included then a $1,000 stipend for each employee to help offset their insurance costs. So we went to all three unions and asked them to meet with their respective members, and of course, it was split. So the General Services, which represents the bulk of the general fund, and the utilities outside of public safety, opted for option two. Fire, Local Six, the fire union, opted for option two. The FOP, the police department, opted for option one. I did have an opportunity to meet with the department in total just over a week ago, and I explained that the other unions had taken the option two, and I explained why I felt like that was the better option. So tonight, when we bring the renewal for CEPT in front of you, we are recommending that we eliminate PPO six and we go with seven, eight, and nine. But we'll be circling back with all three unions depending on your decision tonight. And obviously, we can't do one thing for one union and a different thing for another union. Just so you know, that 17% increase in the budget is based on us keeping the insurance the same. So we'll actually see about $100,000 savings when we move to the insurance option we're recommending tonight. That's one. And then, two, the stipend is included in the budget, which is balanced, so it's already included in here. Okay? So we'll be bringing forth that insurance renewal. We can answer specific questions at that time about the options, but we did want to report back to you on how the union discussions went. Okay? Thank you.
Thank yous. Item four, petitions or communications oral or written. Public comment section offers an opportunity for any citizen to express off opinions or ask questions regarding city services, policies, or other matters of community concern, and any agenda items that are not part of a scheduled public hearing. Those wishing to speak must sign in no later than 6:00 PM. Citizens will have five minutes for comments. This time was established to provide efficiency in the conduct of the meeting and allow equal opportunity for everyone wishing to speak. An immediate answer should not be expected, as issues are typically referred to city staff for follow-up or research, and are then reported back to council and the individual who initiated the comment or inquiry. Written materials for presentation to council must be submitted to the city clerk as the speaker approaches the podium. Tonight, we have three people signed up. The first will be Keely Williams on the subject matter of the Opera House. Please go in.
Good evening. I'm from City Council. So this is in regards to the Jaka Opera House Foundation, whose mission is to revitalize the Jaka Opera House. My name is Keely Williams. I'm here representing that foundation, the Jaka Opera House Foundation, a nonprofit working to stabilize, preserve, and reactivate the historic Jaka Opera House. This building is located at 100 West Main Street. This is one of Trinidad's most important landmarks. Since taking a stewardship after the passing of Dana Crawford in January of 2025, our foundation has carried forward her vision to preserve our heritage while building opportunity a place where our education and entrepreneurship can thrive in the heart of downtown. Unfortunately, instead of partnership, we face obstruction from those who support this in this effort. In April, the city attorney sent a letter demanding that we deed the building to the city or face litigation and liens. In June, we offered to take emergency services, including fire and police, through the building to establish a safety plan in the event of an emergency. We were told that emergency personnel were not allowed to speak to us. Our attorney later confirmed with the city attorney that no law prohibits the coordination with the property owner for safety purposes. Also in June, Director of Development Services stated that during planning and zoning meeting that the city intended to bring a private engineer to determine whether the Opera House, a structure, a private structure that is not owned by the City of Trinidad, is protected, which is also protected within the National Historic District, should be demolished for a parking lot. This was said after our foundation had already submitted a historic structure report addressing the building's condition and providing professional recommendations. That report was ignored. Then, in September, under the direction of the city attorney, officials and consultants entered the Opera House, a private property, without warrant, without court order, or consent. This act was done without proper safety protocols for the first responders, the protocols we had attempted to establish in June. The act carried out on behalf of governmental authority violated Trinidad Municipal Code Section 5-48, which prohibits such entry without notice and judicial authorization. Our attorneys had already warned the city that this would be unlawful. This is unfortunately not an isolated event. It reflects a pattern of obstruction that discourages private investment and damages Trinidad's reputation. When property owners and developers are treated with hostility, when reports are ignored and access is denied, it sends a message that Trinidad is closed for business. But projects like the Jaka Opera House are exactly what the city needs. This project will create over 150 full-time construction jobs, 30 to 40 permanent jobs, and help launch and grow four new businesses. It will bring new private investment, attract tourism, provide childcare, workforce training, small business incubation, real services for our residents and working families. City council should care deeply about what has occurred. Actions that violate civil rights or deprived property rights are not protected under the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act. When those lines are crossed, city council members can be held personally liable. Through our experiences with the city attorney, city clerk, and Director of Development Services, it is clear that council may be receiving poor or incomplete legal guidance. These offices should fully understanding Municipal Code advise you accordingly, yet their actions show otherwise. This must be independently reviewed. This pattern of behavior should concern every citizen. No one should be afraid to speak up when their rights have been violated.
One minute, ma'am.
Thank you. If you or someone you know has experienced this similar conduct, you can report it directly to the Colorado Attorney General's Office or to the Office of Attorney Regulation Council. You do not need an attorney to file a report. Both offices accept submissions online and protect your right to be heard. I am, it gives me no pleasure to be here speaking on this today, and I'm not here to argue, but I am here to ask you to leave. And to show that Trinidad values collaboration over coercion, process over punishment, the Jaka Opera House can be a symbol of renewal and/or it could be a cautionary tale about what happens when power is misused and opportunity is driven away. That choice belongs to you. Thank you.
Number two of three is Peter Crawford, to speak on the Opera House and Fox Theater.
So I'm Peter Crawford, Dana Crawford's number three son, and Trinidad was kind of her last big passion project. She believed in the history of the town and the community, and she was trying to save any of the historic buildings. Guess with the Opera House, the main thing is she always tried to, in moving projects forward, be, in Denver, she had the history of being polite but persistent in trying to set up a cooperative atmosphere to develop in accordance to the actual community, to have it be something great for the community. And that's what I would encourage that process to continue. It's an opportunity to revitalize the building. It's one of the most important buildings in town as far as the main intersection it's on that deserves to be saved. So I would love to see that happen, and I think the people of Trinidad would love it as well. As far as the Fox Theater, after Dana passed, I had a conversation with Governor Polis and tried to encourage him to move forward the OEDAT tax credits that were available. That process had been started for the Fox Theater, and my understanding is that there's a deadline tomorrow for the Fox Alliance to move forward that. When I talked with him, I was like, can you extend this as honoring Dana's interest down in Trinidad? And he says, um, just to follow the process. And the next phase of the process is that suit, that he wasn't seeing as anything antagonistic or anything like that. And it could make the grant, the tax credits for, I believe, a million dollars, and then after it gets brokered, there could be another $850,000 available to help fix up that theater, which I think would be great. And that's about it for what I have to share. It would just be great to see continued movement and conscious development down here. That's not about big money coming in from the outside, but creating an environment for the people in the community to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Final person signed up this evening is Tom Murphy to speak on the election.
Good evening, Mayor Portim, Council on Staff. I just want to let you know that tomorrow, I finished up my last council interview. I've released the mayoral candidates, and I think we should be encouraged. The interviews all went well. They're a bit lengthy, but I like to get to know people a little bit more, and I think it'll be helpful. So what I'm asking is that you encourage people to watch the interviews and get to know the people, because this is an important job that you guys have here. And I think the City of Trinidad is going to be benefit from the fact that we've got some really good candidates. I really listen to some people that have some great ideas, and it's new blood, and it's really fantastic to see. That's all I'm here to say, is just that we're going to do all right up here with the people that we've got running for office. And more than anything with everything that's going on nationally, I'm so glad that City Council has nothing to do with partisan politics. Anyway, guys, thank you very much. Please like, share, and subscribe to Trinidad Times TV 71.
Thanks. Thank you. Moving on to item five, council reports. We'll start.
Definitely report right this time. I attended the skate park opening with Ms. Marshall and Ms. Garrett, Ms. Ms. Lopez. I want to go back to the other. And it was a great turnout, and it was a wonderful thing to see that open and watching the kids enjoying themselves, plus quite a few adults out there enjoying themselves on the skateboards, rollerblades, and BMX bikes. I also went back on Saturday for Push It Trinidad's, I don't know how to call that. It was their event that they had. Kim and Rex put that on, and it was about 45 kids there enjoying themselves, which was wonderful to see. So when this organization comes around, I think, you know, they deserve our support. Our kids love it, so.
That's all I have? Do you have nothing to say? And the waiting's coming up? All right, thank you. Mr. Vaughn?
I introduced David Sampson. He's the Mount Carmel Veteran Service Director there, and we talked about the food distribution went well at the Los Angeles County Fairgrounds last week, and the coffee social that the veterans and spouses monthly attend went really well, so I'll keep you updated. But thank you, David, for everything. Mr. Vaughn?
I attended the retreat for the Creative District yesterday, and it was a very good several hours that we spent talking. Veronica Mays is coordinating that board and overseeing it and doing a great job with it. The whole board was there, and we talked about future plans and elected officers. It was very good. And then I went to the Creator Crow on Friday, and that was really fun. That's one of the things that Creative District helped to sponsor, and it's really fun to see things like that that result in economic benefit to the city that are based in creative industries.
I have a whole lot of things worth mentioning at a council meeting, the grand fest and just the turnout that was there, and I actually observed quite a big bit. I'm just encouraging to see that, to continue to, you know, draw interest in Trinidad, but that's it that I have. So moving on would be the consent agenda approval. Consent agenda can be adopted by simple motion. Read aloud prior to the vote. On motion, any consent agenda item may be removed from the consent at the request of a city council member or individual's consideration. Item A, approval of regular meeting minutes of September 16, 2025, and the special meeting minutes of September 22, 2025. Reappointment of Christopher Spain to the Plumb Island Zoning and Variance Commission. Item C, reappointment of Matthew Depp to the Historic Preservation Commission. Item D, reappointment of Linda Beagle to the ARPA Board. Item E, new hotel and restaurant liquor license application filed by CGNJ Tab Incorporated at 1414 Van Buren Street and setting a public hearing at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 18, 2025, tentative neighborhood boundary as a corporate city limits. Item F, new fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license application filed by Love's Travel Stop and Country Stores Incorporated doing business as Love's Travel Shop, number 1035, at 1,001 Morro Road, and setting a public hearing date at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 18, 2025, tentative neighborhood boundary as a corporate city limits. And then for the bills and payroll, there was an extra period for this time, so they are larger than normal. So approval of the bills is IGG, $3,867,507.71, and payroll for September 13, 2025 through September 26, 2025, and September 27, 2025 through October 10 of 2025 in the amount of $456,033.57. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Shu?
Yeah.
On the second?
Second.
Maggie? For the second, and then a motion, a second, and we'll just have the vote.
Debono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Truhel?
Yes.
Olgutree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Public hearings, there's none. Unfinished business, there's none. Miscellaneous business, item A, resolution authorizing the renewal of health insurance benefits for city employees and their dependents through CEPT Healthcare for Pioneer, January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2026.
I will present, good evening, Mayor Portim and members of City Council. As City Manager Marshall stated, we are seeking to renew our health insurance through CEPT Healthcare for 2026 with a 17% increase. However, by changing plans and dropping PPO six and adding PPO nine, it represents a $105,000 savings to the increase. She threw the positive spin on it. We're seeing a $200,000 increase in cost to the city even with this plan change, but had we renewed straight across with PPO six, seven, and eight, we would have seen a $305,000 increase. So there's a $105,000 savings. But the recommendation is to renew through CEPT plans, PPO seven, eight, and nine, and Ms. Marshall also asked CEPT to seek quotes from other providers and other insurers. They didn't quote.
Well, I didn't quote.
I think the one that you quoted was quite a bit more expensive than this.
Right. So that's just based on basically medical, medical history of the group primarily. That's why we also saw a large increase. And it goes, things like that happen where you have peaks and valleys with what happens in a group. And so it was one of those years where we had a lot more claims than normally, than what we normally do, and so we're seeing the results of it.
I'd like you to provide context to that increase if you'd like.
I think it'd be appropriate, please.
Okay, sure. So our increase is based on our utilization rate. Ms. Garrett, Chief Baggerak, Ms. Coleman, our HR Director, as well as myself, and that was CEPT in detail. We also brought in our union partners to sit in that. So when I'm talking about utilization, I'm talking about from July 2025, sorry, July 2024 through June 2025, how we used our insurance. CEPT is a collective, they're a pool. So 91.5% of every dollar that we pay in premium is paid out in claim. So 90, let me say that again, 91.5% of every dollar we pay in premium is paid out in claim. Were we to go with the private sector, although they didn't choose to bid us, had we chosen to go with the private sector, generally, you're going to see 68% to 78% of every dollar we pay in premium goes to claim because they have shareholders and they have CEO executives. A pool is similar to SIRS, in that that's a collective of local governments insuring their employees for health, dental, and vision. Okay? Our utilization rate for that period of July 2024 through June 2025 was 140%, which means it's very good that our people are using insurance, but there's a lot of reasons that that might be triggered. Post-COVID, people are finally dealing with issues that they didn't deal with before. We possibly have some high usage rates in individuals within the pool. I want to state that we have 173 employees, 23% of them are part-time. That leaves 150 full-time employees. We insure 136 of the 150 employees that we have, so we are providing insurance for a large part of our pool. Okay? We did have one large claim. CEPT as an insurer actually carries insurance, so that was something that I learned this year, an insurance company that carries insurance. So we did have one large claim. CEPT made a claim on their insurance policy for that, and that negated that claim. We had several mid-sized claims. Those claims were borne by the entire pool, so spread across the entire pool. So if you lowered our utilization rate, taking out that very high claim and taking out those mid-sized claims, we were within our 91.5%. But the CEPT board has a policy that you can only move backwards two steps. So based on our usage of 140%, our insurance should have increased 24%. They backed us up one step to 21% and two steps to 17%. I should say that insurance across the board is increasing, so we would have seen an increase even if we'd been perfect this last year, but it wouldn't have been 17%. Does that utilization rate explain why 17%? That's what Ms. Garrett meant. She said it's our usage. So you can choose to look at that positively, which is that people are using their insurance, that we're insuring families, and that the priority for us, the shared union negotiations, was to make sure that every employee keeps their insurance. That's a priority for us. If employees have to drop their insurance because of the increase, then we could see things like a critical illness with a child, with a spouse, or with an employee that's not covered. Now that puts your employee into bankruptcy, and that creates a situation in the municipality where we've brought that stress into work. So there's that concern with them. There's also that human concern that we want to make sure every employee that works for the city does have appropriate health insurance, and they are able to insure their family. So that's why we are offering the stipend, and that's why we worked with the unions very closely to create an option that everyone could agree upon was the best and that we could afford to do. Does that answer your question?
Is there any further questions?
Yeah, and this is just for curiosity on, you know, insurance and that.
Sure.
And I know everything changes in that, but basically, next year's insurance rates, would they be based on this year's deal, or would they be based on what the insurance company does? What I'm saying, we're company does? What I'm saying, where would they start with insurance premiums? Do, I mean, does it go from year to year or just different?
No, it is considered and looked at year to year. And
You know what I'm talking about?
I think I do. So they do a review on claims every single year to determine utilization, and they look at the entire group in that same timeframe. With C E B T, we can never expect a decrease. That's, that's not how it's set up. It's going to always increase. But I will say that this year literally is the first time that we surpassed where we would have been prior to going to C E B T. Had we continued on the path we were on before C E B T and renewed, we would have been paying more all of those years up until now. And I don't know if that quite makes sense either, but without seeing it on paper. But we've, we've saved a lot of money going through C E B T, and so have our employees. So it's been a good plan for us. They're very straightforward. They're not typical insurance brokers because they're a pool, it's similar to SIRS. They're not trying to outbid and lure our business. They're just above board, straight across. Here's, here's where we are with the overall plan. Here's where your group landed. Here's where your increase is. So.
We should say that in twenty twenty-two, no, in twenty twenty-three, we had twelve employees that hit their deductible. And in twenty twenty-four, we had ten employees that their deductible. So of one hundred and thirty-six, those numbers indicate that we are, we have a healthy pool of insurers. We just, our utilization rate went up. Surgeries have been put off. People addressing, they hadn't addressed. It was a, it was a year for that. Go ahead.
I, I just wanted people to know, I appreciate the transparency that you, Senator, and you see Colerick, had with our employees and with the unions, so that they understood what was going on all along. And it wasn't a surprise that they had time to think it over. And I think that was really critical to at least two of the unions saying, yeah, that's, that's what we'll do, and that makes sense. So I, you all did an incredibly professional job with that in a very tough year. And I'm very proud that we are able to do, to provide this to our employees. It's getting to less and less so that employers can fully insure their employees and their families. So great job.
Any further questions? I just had a quick question, I think. When you referenced the entire pool, that, that is specifically our employee group pool, not anything extreme used to that, correct?
When I said the entire pool, I meant all of the insured agencies, so not just us.
So the entire pool is past the city. It is, it is the collective larger pool.
It is.
So.
I don't know, Ms. Garrett, do you have any idea how many jurisdictions are in that? It's over two hundred, but we don't know the number. Exactly.
Generally speaking, in insurance, the larger the pool, the better it is. So, okay, I'm glad we're taking advantage of those larger numbers, so.
Sure. We're guaranteed that any large claim will be covered by our, our insurer's insurance.
Right.
And any mid-sized claim will be borne across the entire pool.
Okay. I, I have no further questions.
Okay.
So with that, is there a motion?
I still hold.
Second?
Do we have to introduce this one? It's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
So that would be Shoe and Ogletree? And then when you're ready for the vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Shoe?
Oh, yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Sorry. Item B: Consideration of the purchase of a control panel to operate the newly renovated centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant.
And, yeah, Mr. Coleman?
Uh, no, Mr. Stanislawski.
I'm Stanislawski.
Yeah. I'm the manager of the wastewater treatment plant, Ms. Jacobs. So you have the agreement. Thank you.
So we're considering the control panel for the, the centrifuges that we have. The one we have right now is outdated and obsolete, cannot get parts for it. It has to be totally rebuilt, which is done here cast, but I'm not sure how long that one's going to last. So the whole panel is controlled by this, the whole machine is controlled by this one panel that's obsolete and twenty-five years old. And I have to send it to Radwell International in New Jersey to get fixed, overhauled, and it came back three times before it got it right. And there is nowhere to get it fixed, nowhere to find one, eBay don't even have one. I looked all over, but this is unfortunate. But the centrifuge itself just got rebuilt last year. So the center, the unit itself is rebuilt and redone. I just needed a controller to control the whole thing. It shuts down and it doesn't keep running. And we got a new C P U units put in for the controls, but needs to be, the control panel is outdated for the new C P Us, the P L C units that have been put in. And so we, going back and forth, there's been fighting with it. And in the past, we've had to hire portable de-watering units to come in and dewater for us. And it's cost the city and us a lot of time and money. We've had twice portable units, and I had to rent a filter press one time for two months to get this job done for us. And pretty much what the system does is it takes, pulls the water out of the solids, separates the solids from the water, and the rest of it gets landfillled, the solids get landfillled, and the water goes back to the system to get treated. But the control panel itself just won't let us control any part of the unit once it goes out. And then we have to either rent another machine or do something else different. But pretty much that's what it is. And then we have the jetback that, thank you guys, was approved. We have money budgeted for the jetback, which came in landers. So we have approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left to purchase this unit. So it's, the money's there already. It's part of that jetback money that was saved that came in the way under bid. And I have two, we've got two quotes, and one's from Apple About, the actual manufacturer, and one's from Control Automations. And Control Automations was the actual company that put in the first unit, so they already know technology for our company, that was our system. And that was developed. And so this is what we need for the wastewater plant to keep our operations functioning. All right. And any other questions we have for me?
Yeah, any, any questions?
I, I do. And it's not very new or anything. But when we did this new centrifuge and all that, how come we didn't order the parts for that then and did this all at one time and save just some money?
This whole thing was started with the bowl inside, there's a bowl inside that turns inside the system, and that was out. But once we got all together, the whole bids and everything for all that, they could not do it at the time, so you could not do it at the time to do both, like, both parts at the same time. So then we came back and put it all back together. That's when this back drive controller, is what it's called, went out, and that's, and we had to finally go back and see if we can get that redone. But it was, they're all two separate units, two separate
Right.
control things. So. Apple About actually gave me a quote, but it was like two hundred thousand, uh, twenty thousand dollars or more higher than Control Automations. And I'm not sure if you have the, the quotes on hand.
Thank you. Yeah, I see here that it's, it's quite a bit higher. But the lead time on that is ridiculous. It's almost pointless to even order front if we do. Because the sooner we get this, I believe, the better. Because if it's hindering any operations.
Yeah, right now, we're just hanging by a dragger, just hoping that it does not go out again, because I'm not running, I run out of space that I have to, like, when I, we call it wasting, so we waste all our biosol into a digester, and it's just there in thickens. But I'm running out of space to, to store it, so I actually have to turn on it still to dewater all that. I'm actually using a fire fire, secondary clarifier for extraction as extra space. So that's.
Did you have a question?
My grandfather's a civil engineer, so thank you for all you do.
Oh, thank you.
Work.
But the centrifuge, is that being separated through chemical or just RPM?
Uh, yes, both, actually. So I add a polymer, a polymer compound to it, and mix it with non-hot water, run it through the centrifuge, it's like an auger inside it, and just separates it, locks the solids together, and pulls the water out.
Is it causing wear and tear on the parts or?
Just the bowl itself that got refixed last year.
Okay.
That was redone and resurfaced and sent out and came back, and it's been working fine. It's just, in turning the unit on itself, there's control where it is.
And that chemical is part of the, the waste of the system, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It gets back into the, into the biosol and then hauled out to the landfill.
Okay. Just a few simple questions. I just, I have a quick question. I have, I have very limited experience with, you know, control panels of fairly large size. But I know a lot of times, if the control panels has problems, especially if it's a variable frequency drive type, which I'm, I'm not sure if this is enough, but it, it can cause problems in the driven equipment. Are we certain that we haven't caused any problems in the centrifuge?
Yes. So the unit that we have right now does not have a V F D or food tube drive on it. It does not have that one. So this unit, when it gets retrofitted, we'll put a V F D out. So that'll help. It'll be changed out, we're going to change out the back end of it, which is a big drum bearing on it. That's going to be pulled out, and the motor will be put in, and
Oh.
V F D will be put in with it, and so that'll help.
So we haven't caused any other damage?
No, no, damage. But yeah, that will be replaced when we get a V F D put in, which will have all of that.
I really appreciate you being here tonight and the presentation. Thank you. I think there's no further questions. So with that, is there a motion for item B?
So moved.
Ogletree?
Second?
No, second.
Shoe for the second, and a vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Shoe?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes. Item ten, reports by the city manager and city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Williamson. So I want to kick off by reporting back that our Historic Preservation Commission was here in late summer to talk to you about a scavenger hunt that they were launching in search of all of our historic properties in the downtown. A lady named Debbie Head won the contest. She's pretty fantastic. She took a video of her scavenger hunt and uploaded it to her blog, and it is so charming. So I would encourage you to go to her blog, which is called Tide and Tumbleweed Tales. And you can see the video of Debbie doing the scavenger hunt. Once again, that is Tide and Tumblewood Tales. And she videoed it. It's so wonderful. We were excited she won. Our Art and Culture Commission is excited to roll out the baseball. It's done. Please see it at your places. It's pretty fantastic. It's out at the ballpark. Councilmember Ogletree is showing the picture there. So please be sure and stop and view that at the ballpark. We're excited that's done. We've hired a police chief. We'll be starting on Monday, October twentieth. We'll be putting out a press release next week. That press release will also include an announcement for a meet and greet for the public, for the community to come out and meet our new chief. And we're encouraging everyone to attend and give him a warm welcome. So look for that press release that will go out on Monday. Okay? We want to thank city staff that worked to support the Rad Fest event, and also remind council that Fancy Spider Music Festival is this weekend. So please come out, enjoy, choose a venue, hear some music, and participate with our community. Our water tank project, the Monument Lake Tank, has been completed. So we've now completed two, both North Side and Monument Lake. Our next tank is going to be the Allendale Tank. So we've got the bypass getting put in place and the portable tanks delivered. And that will be the next one. And then we'll move on to South Side early next year after the, the snow. We've secured two conferences to come into Trinidad in twenty twenty-six. One, many of you have known and talked about. It's the Colorado Creative Industries Summit, which is happening in early June. We expect to see three to four hundred attendees in town for that. Another one, we got word of this week. We're really excited. We've drawn the Colorado Trail Symposium. We'll be holding their conference in Trinidad next September. That's approximately seventy to a hundred and twenty guests, so we're looking forward to that, and showing off some of our trails and our outdoor racquetmenities. I mentioned the schedule for budget season earlier in the policy report, but just wanted to circle back and mention that we'll be covering the general fund in depth. So please let me know if you have any questions in advance so we can be prepared for those departments. It's not our last time to talk about it. So if a question occurs during the work session, we can certainly circle back. Let's see. The gas department will be doing the second of two regulatory audits, which are due this year. The audit agency is the Public Utility Commission. They're a pretty tough commission regulatory-wise. I just want to reiterate that we have some of the most talented folks working in this department, and it shows during these audits. They have a, they are in charge of one of our more complicated regulatory environments, and our gas department is top-notch. So when those audits complete, we'll be bringing you those results and any recommendations that come out of that to implement. We expect to finalize union negotiations in October. I'll be circling back with the F O P regarding the approval tonight of the insurance and finishing up that. And then I'll be authorizing M O Us as a result of this discussion. As soon as the budget's adopted, I'll sign off on those. Just a reminder, next year is the year we open the contracts. So we'll start discussing union contracts early next year. But this year's been pretty seamless. I want to thank Mr. Downs for sitting in on the union negotiations this year. His counsel was appreciated, and he was able to help with that. Thank you. We have to cut the ribbon on the skate park this last week, so thank you for coming. Manny, we also had the mayor there, as well as community members. I didn't realize skaters are not just young folks. There are many folks my age skating on skateboards. I was completely, just completely in awe of their abilities.
Not my age, yeah, just saying.
I issued, in the past couple of weeks, I've issued three support letters for different agencies. October first is a big grant agency time. So we issued a support letter to Mount Carmel for the Bell Tower. They are applying for funding from History Colorado. We issued a support letter for Health Solutions to apply for a grant to continue our co-responder program. And that's hugely important to our law enforcement response. And we issued a support letter to C P W, who is seeking funding to do fire mitigation at Fisher's Peak State Park. So issued those in, in the name of the city. We're just a few weeks away from opening, opening pickleball. So ten days and we should be open. I do know the pickleballers are out there and they're excited. We're looking for the fencing, which is due this week, and then the cleanup of the site. We love seeing people use the court, and we'll be excited when it's officially ours. And we're able to offer that to the community. We'll be announcing a ribbon cutting on that soon. Just to remind you that both the pickleball and the skate park, we have put our banner, which thanks the public that these projects were paid for, with the one percent capital improvement tax. So those are two exciting projects we were able to complete. The South Side Bathroom project bids came back. We're going to have those on the, on the next meeting agenda. And we're bringing that in front of you. We're also completing the concrete work improvements on that bridge walkway that goes from the parking lot to the community center. So both of those improvements. Then I started with an exciting program brought to you in late summer, and I want to finish with some exciting programs that we're going to be bringing to you during the holiday season. So I want to announce a Christmas cash program, which is kicking off tomorrow. So our city staff is going to be visiting businesses and asking them to participate in the Christmas cash program. It will start on October twentieth at eight A M. It will end on December twenty-fourth at five P M. You can go to a participating business, and we're hoping many businesses sign up, and you spend the money at that business. If you bring in a receipt that matches that date, we will offer you, here at City Hall, at the library, at the Welcome Center, at Space to Create, we will offer you one dollar of Christmas cash for every ten dollars that you spend in, in a business. So if you spend a hundred dollars in a business, you will receive So if you spend a hundred dollars in a business, you will receive ten dollars of Christmas cash. That maxes out at two hundred and fifty dollars on any given receipt. So if you spend two hundred and fifty dollars buying a furniture, you can receive twenty-five dollars in Christmas cash. Now, what do you do with that cash? You turn around and spend it in a local business. So if you turn around and spend that cash in a local business, then we'll offer several times for these businesses to bring the cash in that they've collected and redeem them for funding. We're doing this promotion out of our tourism fund dollars for this year. We moved a lot of our operations out of tourism. So we're going to do this for the holidays to increase business in our local businesses. We're doing it not just in downtown, but all throughout town. Chains are not eligible, but any locally owned, non-chain business is eligible. So we encourage everyone. We'll be rolling that program out tomorrow and we'll be kicking it off October twentieth. We want to thank the city staff that's going to be implementing this. It's amazing. Additionally, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be reporting out trolley rides again this summer. Trolley rides where you, if, we're, we're securing a driver. So if you know anyone who can drive the trolley and is willing, please send them our way. But we're going to have trolley rides with cocoa and candy canes to show the lights that people put up on their homes within our community. That leads me to the final program. We're going to be doing home and commercial lighting contests. So we want to thank in advance our power and light department, who will be sponsoring both that home lighting contest and that downtown commercial contest. So, um, once again, thanks to the city staff that's going to be implementing this. Finally, I want to announce that this year we're going to do a citywide holiday party. We will be inviting council to that. It will be held at Space to Create on Friday evening. December twelfth, it is for the employees. It is for their guests and it is for the council. So we are excited to have received at least one donation so far for that. But we feel like it's important after the year we've had it coming together. We are going to have a citywide holiday party this year rather than each individual department hosting their own party. So thank you. That's what we have this week. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Just reach out to me. Okay?
Thank you.
How can I compete? Even I'm serious, but I'm exhausted. That's very thoroughly. Yeah, I know, really. But Mayor Proten, council members, we just have one thing that I want to mention. And that is, um, it is that time of year again for the Legal Resource Day. And a number of, good, thank you. Thank you, Council members.
Judge Marshall, Sam Tippin-Woodson.
Good.
And Kate, uh, Manger.
Good, fantastic. It will be at Space to Create, Create, October twenty-first. And it's going to go all day. We have a flyer. I, I hope that this will be cut broadly and widely, um, posted and disseminated. Uh, but there will be four of us, my understanding, Aaron Harris, Pam Nelson, Caitlin Young, and myself. And people who sign up will be given twenty-minute appointments for a consultation with one of us regarding matters in the areas of family law, probate, civil matters, meaning money cases, landlord tenant issues, uh, small claims, or the sealing of records. This is not the same. Is the vacating the warrant day? That's going to be separate. You know, a lot of us will be participating in that as well. But if you know anyone, um, who would like to consult with an attorney for free, please send them our way on October twenty-first. The last thing I'd like to say is, this kind of comes up every year and Tara doesn't know this. But it, and I've mentioned it to council before, but it would be really wonderful if there could be a sign at Space to Create. When we, uh, saying that it's Space to Create, whenever we do this event, I know, I know. Yeah, I know. I'm representing the uninformed demographic right now. But no, whenever we do this, there are a lot of people who come in and say, I live here, I've lived here a long time, and I had utterly no idea what this place was or where Space to Create was. So anyway, I just want to ask, yeah, I'd just ask for a sign, it's Space to Create. And that is all I have. I'm sorry, like I said, I can't.
All right, thank you, Les. Item eleven, executive section for the discussion of- CRS section twenty-four dash six, four oh two, part two F, not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official. The appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official or personal policies that do not require the discussion of matters, personal, particular employees, i.e. city attorney evaluation. Uh, is there a motion?
I'm so moved.
A second?
A second.
Uh, we'll have a vote?
Debono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Ogletree? Yes. Williamson?
Yes.
Um, there will be no vote after this, so this will conclude the public portion of tonight's meeting. And, um, we'll give everybody a minute to clear.